All right, thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, September 19th. It is 6:04 PM. I apologize for the delay in getting started this evening. This is the Policy Committee meeting. Today, we have myself, Heather Raymond, and we have Ms. Lampier. Two makes a quorum, so we're good to go. And we have Mr. Poska. All right, so let's dive right in. The first item on the agenda is GBC approval of salaries. I have. There we go. And so, how old was this one? This one was old.
2012.
So not that old. So the only change, there's two changes on this one. One is to update with our new ADA compliant format. And then the other change is earlier this year, we met and we talked about as a board, wanting the board to be able to interview, no, yeah, director level or above, right?
Correct.
But this is salaries. I'm getting confused. I apologize. Let me just stop talking and let Mr. Poska take.
I think you're kind of combining the conversation that we have with the board that does tie in with the salary piece.
Yes.
So only non-affiliated employees at director level above is what we're talking about, is the need for the Board of Education for approval for their salaries at the time of hire.
That's right, yes. So typically, the HR committee brings us recommendations for principal, assistant principal, assistant director, with a salary attached based on the charts in the non-affiliated or the appropriate union handbook. But above that, so director, assistant superintendent, superintendent, the board has flexibility for negotiation. Right?
That is correct.
Okay. So we only changed this policy. We cross out non-affiliated employees at the assistant principal level because the assistant principals are part of the principals. That's why.
That's the only question I had, so. Sorry. I was wondering about that, and you answered my question, so now I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Great, yeah, so that was it. I'm sorry, I got my wires crossed there. So it's just making sure that we only negotiate for people who don't have a union contract. The union contract stands for salaries for people who are in the, and NASIS. All right, so I move that we approve GBC as amended.
Second.
You're the worst notes ever. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It seems silly to do a motion and a second, and then the two of us to vote on it, because if we disagree, it's just not going to pass.
I would still second for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one is IJLA. This one's entitled "Removal of Media Center Materials." I'm wondering, actually, as I'm here tonight, if we ought to tweak the title? Because this is talking about old, worn-out materials. It's not talking about content. Yeah, and I don't recommend any changes.
Yeah, I saw that there were no changes, so I figured it was just the format. But you are right, that makes it unclear about why they're coming off of the shelves. So I don't know if, Mr. Poska, did you have an idea of what the title could be?
No. I think as you get, I mean, I think it certainly explicitly details that it's for the weeding out purposes, once you get into the process of that.
Yeah.
Could be, say, the removal of, I don't know, probably to say, we don't want to say "removal."
I don't want to say outdated, because it's not necessarily outdated, although some of it, it would be removal of.
Maybe, maybe we could use worn, worn materials or damaged materials?
But it's also, you know, if no one has taken it out in a number of years, the library might choose to take it out of circulation, simply because it's clearly not popular with the kids, and they want to make room for new materials.
I don't know if you want to put the word "weeding" of media center materials? That is, is part of the process they go through, the crew process, which the details there, the continuous review, evaluation, and weeding. In my conversation, email back and forth with Ms. Riley and Ms. Belancher, two of our lead librarians, they detailed, this is the process and a best practice that they go through, the librarians go through in the district for their weeding of some of these selections that may be older than one hour.
And we do have a policy regarding content, which is not ready to be reviewed yet. And I don't remember what the title of that one is.
I like weeding. I mean, it wouldn't be something that people look at and go automatically, oh, no, what is this? This is controversial, because it's not controversial. It's just stuff that's worn and not really used anymore.
Okay, so let's, I will motion to amend IJLA title. Place. Saying this very slowly, because I'm writing it at the same time. Removal with weeding.
A second.
Oh, and send it to the full board.
Second.
Hopefully that will, I mean, no one came here today, and I did see some chatter online, and a couple of constituents reached out to me with concerns, but once I read them the policy, they clearly aren't here.
Okay.
But we'll see if this impacts people coming on Monday. All right, so all in favor of sending it to the full board with that title change, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. All right, so Policy JFA. I'm just going to move that we send it to the board as is. Just the same as what the law is.
Yeah, second. I saw you included the law, or the law was included in the packet. And the law is a lot, but the actual policy is not, so.
But I mean, I don't want to print the law in the policy, in case it changes at some point in the future. Our policy is that we follow the law. I don't know of any, I don't know of any bills currently retained at the State House or being entertained to change this law. It's been, it's been there for over a decade now, the way it is, so. But just in case, I thought it was interesting, and I thought Ms. Johnson would be here. Ms. Johnson always likes to have the law, and I didn't want to look it up during the meeting for her. So I thought she would enjoy reading the two or three pages of all the legal jargon. All right, so did you second my motion?
I think I seconded. Yeah, I think I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, did we want to, did you want to just mention for the public? The portion of the law, in case anyone's interested, is 19312, and it's in the packet for tonight's meeting. And it really goes into details about residency and custody matters, and, you know, who has physical custody of a child, and where a child is living, and joint legal. So if people have questions about that and what school district their child should attend based on that, please feel free to view the law and talk to someone at central office or at your, you know, community school. All right. So the next one is a little bit related. It's JFAA, and it's regarding admissions of resident students. And in this one, we just updated it to include another legal reference, which is RSA 110D, the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunities for Military Children. So we are not changing any of our requirements for school entry, which is things like you have to have a physical, your immunization records, your birth certificate, or other suitable documentation and proof of that residency satisfactory to the superintendent. But then, we have the legal references about how that might impact children in the military.
I like that you included that. I mean, I think it's important to have kids who are in the military, you know, who move around a lot, included.
And that was part of the NIH SBA update in 2014, to include that RSA as part of the policy. So we've updated that to include that for exactly the reasons you're talking about.
And I think that Nashua, you know, as a rule, we tend to be a welcoming city. And so when kids show up here, we really try to work diligently with their parent or guardian to get them into school and to get them to have a consistent routine. So I think that that's a value that we have, which is, I know, I'm proud of it. All right.
I have one question. I'm wondering if, why the McKinney-Ventle Law wasn't included in this? I mean, I'm sure it's included elsewhere in the policies and stuff, but.
I have a policy for the McKinney-Ventle Law. Oh, I think we do.
Yeah.
And I think that's why, because it has its own policy.
I just thought of it, because I was saying how, you know, we want to reflect all the kids in the district, and then I was like, oh, those kids aren't, you know, reflected in this policy, but if they're reflected elsewhere, then, you know.
And I think we just updated that policy last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, it is. All right, I'm finding the McKinney-Ventle Law here, but.
Just testing your Google ability.
J, obviously. It's JFABD.
Okay.
And it essentially says that homeless students have federal protections. And so we really work with those parents or guardians to make sure that those kids have a safe place to be. And if you become homeless while you're one of our students, we will keep you until the family lands someplace stable. And that's the law. And I think it's an appropriate law, personally, having been a social worker. Yeah. All right, I lost my place. I'm a scattered mess tonight, I apologize. All right, I move to send JFAA to the full board as amended.
Second.
Q? Sorry, I closed my window, which was dumb, because that had my agenda and all of the materials. All right, so all in favor of sending JFAA to the full board, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Then, oh, look, here's the, it just got bumped a page, the military compact in the packet. That's helpful. Very long. Holy, okay. JJF. So JJF and JJF-R are related policies. These policies are regarding our Student Activities Funds. And Mr. Poska asked Mr. Donovan to review these and make sure, and also Ms. Jengres too, the athletic director.
The high school principals.
Oh, the high school principals. To make sure that they didn't need any changes. And I, they did not ask for any changes. Our Student Activities Funds have been like well-oiled machines, knock on wood, for the last decade. Great.
Excellent.
I'm only saying decade, because that was the last time this policy was updated. I have no knowledge of what happened before 2012.
There's also an auditing process that we regularly go through with our Student Activity Funds. So at this time, you know, my conversations with Mr. Donovan, this is the intent of, you know, the policy, the intent of the policy is what we do follow. Mr. Burns, Ian, Mr. Richard are in support that this is exactly what we're doing. So although we haven't updated it since 2012, these are the policies and procedures that we are going through right now.
Can you, like, give me an example or two of what kind of things the funds are used for?
Sure, so let's say the National Honor Society is having a promotion, you know, some type of fundraiser, and they're selling ribbons, you know? So the money collected would go into the National Honor Society account, that'd be an example. You know, the class of 2023 would be a student activity, and class of 2024, you know, saving money and for dues, for proms and dances of that nature. Those would be some types of the line items for different student activity funds.
Okay, so they would go to help all the students in the school, not just the ones in that particular club?
No, they would, you know.
Just for that club?
Just like for the student, National Honor Society would be for theirs, the class of 2024, you know, obviously, they're fundraising throughout the course of their four years to help to free the costs of maybe some of the end-of-the-year expenses with proms, et cetera. So that would be part of that. Oh, Student Council, they might be doing a fundraiser, so they're, you know, collecting money, you know, that offset some of the funds, the things that they might be doing, so.
Okay.
Variety of like that, variety of funds like that.
Deco raises money to go to competitions.
Deco would be another example.
Coffee cart that Warren wanted.
Yeah.
I learned when I went to Open House last week, that the Athletic Booster, I don't know what they're called, Athletic Booster Club, Athletic Booster, I don't know what they're called.
Association.
Association, was here selling just Nashua Athletics, kind of only North, not associated with a single team, t-shirts and sweatshirts and all sorts of stuff. And the woman who runs that said that all of that money is collected, and then they disperse it as scholarships to the student athletes' senior year.
That's great.
So I didn't know that, and I was like, oh, well, I guess I'm going to buy two t-shirts then. So it's really neat. I know it's unfortunate that we have to do a lot of fundraising, but it allows our kids to have a more enriching experience.
Yes.
All right, so I move to send JJF to the full board without any changes except the format thing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then JJF-R is the procedures and the accounting standards that we require people to follow. At the end of the day, it's the principals, I think, who are the custodians, the people of ultimate authority over all of these funds, which is a lot of responsibility for them on top of everything else. But it goes through all of the requirements for how the principals are required to maintain their records of all of the funding, and where they have to keep track of them and report them out. The only change to this policy is that we changed the word "associate" to "assistant principals."
Okay.
Because we don't have associates, we have principals and assistant principals. So that's it. So FYI, only the principal and assistant principal can sign any checks.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, so I move to send JJF-R to the board as amended. Ms. Lampier?
Second, sorry.
Wait, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. ADD kicks up.
See, I've lost my train of thought like four times tonight. Okay, so the next set, we didn't get to during our August meeting, when we had that big group of policy policies, and I wish that there were more people here. It is what it is. I'm sure that Ms. Bishop will be irritated if people want to talk about these at the full board next week, but I can't force people to come and chat about it here. So the next several policies, hold on, I'm going to have to go back to the beginning. Next several policies are all related to our policy. But there's one policy that the School Board Association recommends to replace all of them, which I think we should do. And so if you look at the packet, the first policy in the group is BGAA, which is the one that the School Board Association recommends. And then instead of BGAA, we have currently BDE, BDEA, BDF, and BGD, which is a lot. And I think it comes from a time when we weren't a part of the School Board Association, and so we were trying to kind of cobble these things together ourselves.
Yeah.
Mr. Poska, did you have any thoughts or recommendations?
No, when we, as part of our policy planning, one of the things that Ms. Raymond and I talked about, I think this is a decision that's been made by the policy. You know, we've asked all the committees to review their status as a committee and what is appropriate. To support what Ms. Raymond said, Policy BGAA seems like an umbrella policy that covers several of our other policies. So there was a thought that if we do adopt this policy, there's some other policies that could be removed, because I think that's within this policy.
Okay. How we generated this list. The only thing that I failed to do before bringing it here tonight was under the Policy BGAA, which is the proposed one from the School Board Association. You can see that we have the School Board Association language here, because it's kind of a draft. There's a couple of things that they have in here that we don't have, and we're not doing. Oh, we do, I'm sorry. I was thinking review of the existing manual, but we don't have a manual, we have it online, and we review these things on a monthly basis, so that's good. If you look on page two, item number three, we need to put in the policy number for our public comments policy. And I know we have one, because we worked on it last year, and we updated it. So we just need to pull that out and add it to this if we're going to go with it.
The two 15-minute comment periods that equal to 30 minutes or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And where does that have to be updated, Ms. Raymond?
It's page, oh, I just did it again.
It's page two.
Page two, under Procedures for Policy and Development Review?
Yep.
Okay.
Page two.
It's, yeah, it's D, D3, no, E3, sorry.
Thank you. Here it is, yep. Page two, item three, under E, yeah.
Okay.
So I was just, I have too many windows open on my computer, and I keep losing things. So BOE policies. Let me just, I'm pulling up on our website our policy manual. I believe that that is under section B. Is policy B, E as in elephant, D as in dog, H, and that is public comment. So under page two, E3, we need to reference that we do have that policy, and that's where you can find the public participation part. And then on item number four, it says, "Any changes agreed upon or requested by the board during the first reading of a policy shall be made by the, prior to the second meeting." It's the second meeting. So that is pretty much, we need to put in that blank either, we need to put that the policy committee, we review any, like, Mr. Poska and I do our review, we bring it here, the policy committee reads something for the first time, we discuss it, and then the policy committee is the one who makes a recommendation to the full board.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that I had on this, because I didn't know, I was like, are we, do we have to, like, bring it to the board twice? I was kind of confused about that, so.
No, so the first time would be here, and then the second time would be at the board. But we don't need, because Mr. Poska and I involved superintendent at the review before it comes here, and then the superintendent also participates at our full board meeting, we don't need him to then add that step to.
Okay.
Make a recommendation to the full board, unless he disagrees with us. But I don't think Dr. Andre or any previous superintendent has ever been shy about letting me know when he disagrees with me.
Does that mean that number five is just going to be taken out? Oh, so that, it won't be taken out, because it still counts as a second reading?
Correct.
Right, so the first reading should say, so section four should say, "Policy Committee" for the blank, because we're the first reading. Number five is the second reading, which is at the full board. And I know that, I know that people dislike having amendments made and acted on at the full board meeting, but state law says that we can, that we can do that, and the School Board Association says it's best practice, so that, to allow that to happen.
Okay.
It's really best for everyone if people come to the individual committee meetings, and we have these discussions here about amending, instead of spending time at a full board meeting. But every board member has the right to raise any objection, even if it has been discussed at the committee level.
Okay.
And sometimes you don't think of, like, I don't remember the policy, but we had a situation, oh, the Chromebook Agreement. We had a situation where we discussed a Chromebook Agreement at length in policy committee, and then we thought we had a solution, and then once the principals looked at our proposed solution, they were like, oh, wait.
Yeah.
That's not the best proposed solution, we have a better one. And so at the full board meeting, we made an amendment to that policy to be more in line with what was actually going on on the ground.
Okay.
Which I think is appropriate, because we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, I mean, why are you going to ignore, if someone gives you more information, you should really consider it.
Right, and we're under, people can come to the committee meetings and offer public comments, it's very rare, but certainly people come to the full board meeting to let us know how they feel.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, I don't, prior to final approval by the board, each policy will be titled, dated, and coded consistent with the classification system by the School Boards, New Hampshire School Board Association. That is the letters that we've been updating all our policies to, because we used to use a number system.
Okay.
Section E6 should say coded. Sent. HSBA. And then the second part of that, we don't need, because we're not using that as a separate system. On page three, F1, it says, "The board may adopt, amend, or repeal written policies at any meeting by a majority vote of the board members and attendants, provided that public notice of the proposed action was given at least how many days or weeks at a previous board meeting?" So in our policy on public notice for board meetings, we have a, I think it's three days to the board, everything has to be posted 24 hours to the public. And it's not at a previous board meeting, it's just posted on the website.
Posted three, posted three days prior to the meeting.
Yep, so page four, E1, it should say, "Three days prior..." Prior to the meeting. But I think the law is 24 hours, because every now and then, we can have an emergency meeting.
Right.
Except in cases of emergency, I'm going to write.
Yeah, but then there's also procedures that supersede that for an emergency meeting.
Yep. Oh, that's the number, item number two. I don't need to write, except in cases of emergency. But basically, I don't, one of the advantages of us writing our own policies years ago is that there was less legalese and jargon, and I think they were a little bit more digestible. But this is basically saying that we can amend any policies, provided that we have provided notice to the public.
Okay.
That we are going to consider amending or rescinding these policies, which we do in practice, almost always, we have a meeting here in policy committee, where we've posted three days, at least three days prior to the meeting, it's usually the Friday before, what our agenda will be, what the policies are we're considering, and then all of the information, right? And then, the Friday before the full board meeting, all of the recommendations from policy committee are posted for the public as well. So this is just making sure that the public has notice.
Yeah, we do, we do a good job of that, I think.
I think there are school boards in the state that pose something, like, they would propose it at the August meeting, and then they'd have to vote on it again at the September, or vote on it on the September meeting. I kind of like our system, where we have the committee meeting and then the full meeting in the same month, so it's more timely.
Yeah, it's more, you're like, you still know what you're talking about when it comes up at the full board.
Hey? All right, and then item E, wait, I lost my, F2 there on page three talks about, "In case of emergency, we can take immediate action to adopt a policy or revise an existing policy." So. So should something come up, I can't, I can't honestly think of one right now, but I'm sure something happened during COVID when we had a couple of emergency meetings where we had to immediately change a lot of things, where we needed to take action to suspend a policy for the duration of the emergency. I'm certain that we did that.
Yeah. I wrote that in my notes, COVID, question mark.
Right, right. So, and I'm hoping that never happens again, but you never know what you don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last item that we, needs our attention at this meeting, if we are going to adopt this policy and rescind the others, is on page three, item G4, which I have to say, I really appreciate Mr. Poska and Tara highlighting all this stuff in yellow. So it was easy for you to find. It says, "An up-to-date policy manual shall be maintained in the district's website with a hard copy in the superintendent's office. The superintendent," and then in parentheses, "and if applicable, in each school building." And then it says, "The superintendent should also ensure that hard copies of the district manual are recalled annually and updated as appropriate." This is interesting to me because I'm certain that we don't have a copy of our printed policy manual in all the school buildings. Do we have a copy of the printed manual at the superintendent's office?
I consistently refer to the, you know, Ms. Cincella, you know, at the conclusion of this meeting and after the full board next week, we'll then update the, our policy on the website. So that is really the reference that we consistently have and the reference that I use on a regular basis to many others.
Could we just remove that?
Or? So I think that we are required by law to have a physical copy somewhere should something happen to the website. It used to be 20 years ago that each incoming board member was handed a binder that was the policy manual. And they were like, welcome to the board, here's the policy manual. But now we have the internet.
Yeah.
And so we don't have to, you know, pull out the old one and put in the new one every time there's a change. But even six years ago, when I first came on the board, that was frequently the process. Like you would get your physical copy of all of the things under consideration. And I had a binder that we would, that we would play with. It was a lot, a lot. So I'm going to suggest that we, on page four, item G4, that we strike the "and if applicable in each school building." Having said that, I know that student-specific policies are included in the handbooks for each school. So the JIC, our, you know, discipline policy, or the behavior codes, those are in all of them. And I know that the Chromebook Agreement policy is now going to be incorporated in some of the handbooks for next year so that the ones that parents need to know right away are easily applicable, easily accessed at each school website. And then the, there's usually an email or something that goes home at the beginning of school year that says, here's how you access the
That's right.
handbook for your child at this school. Did I miss anything?
Ms. Raymond, on, I'm looking at page two. It's under D, Procedures for Policy Development Review. Number six, Policy Committee where we report to the full board. Month?
Yes, monthly. Poor Ms. Cincella. Now my notes are no longer in order of the chronological order here. So page two. Trying to. Six, I see D.
Yes, D six.
Blank, it should say monthly. Actually, I almost want to say instead of monthly, after. Because we've talked about having two policy committee meetings a month, should it be necessary. But I was going to say, well, let's just say monthly because we can always do it more often.
Another alternative would be within two weeks of the policy committee meeting?
I don't want to do that because if we, I want to make sure that the superintendent and the president of the board have the flexibility that if a policy isn't time-sensitive that we've discussed in committee and there is something that is time-sensitive that needs to be at the next board meeting, that they have the flexibility to bump some policies, do you know what I mean? To, because we have two board meetings a month. So, you know, should Monday or, you know, in the rest of this week, something emerge where Dr. Andre feels that we need to devote our board member, our board time to that issue.
And move it to the
We could move policy, you know, to October. I don't want to tie our hands. I don't, again, I don't, I can't recall that happening, although that's not true. I can recall times when we've had like a hot button issue, like when the, when the JR OTC was considering a riflery program. We had so many public comments that we ended up not being able to get through our entire agenda.
Yeah.
So things that weren't time-sensitive, we simply tabled till the next, the next meeting because we needed to, you know, allow the public to have their say and really dive into that particular issue. So, all right. And then BGC, the only other thing I have on here is, again, on page two, item C, it says, "The policy committee shall establish a schedule for reviewing existing board policies and formatting recommendations regarding the same for the board." And then it says, "Consistent with policy BGAC." I just want to cross-reference that we. It's not on my list of ones that we're thinking about getting rid of. But it's also not on our list of our manual. That is one that we're going to have to look up. So I would, I would strike. I would strike that highlighted portion that says, "Consistent with BGAC." Have it? Allegable. Okay. So before I make the motion to adopt BGAA, I just wanted to take a minute for us to look at BDE, BDEA, BDF, and BGD, which are our own policies, to make sure that there isn't anything in there that we are losing.
They went, I had written down BGD, the Board Review of Administrative Procedures, I think it is.
Yep.
And I put that it's not addressed in BGAA. And I think, I thought that it was important to keep the power, that power. But I don't really remember what it was because I wrote it down like a month ago, so.
I'm sorry, sorry. It's okay. So BGD, it just says, "The board reviews, reserves the right to review and make recommendations to administrative procedures should they be inconsistent out of compliance with policies adopted at the board." And we just re-approved this one last year. And I think that the, the purpose of this one was in case, I don't know, in case the district was doing something, a procedure that we felt was inconsistent. Obviously, the district is not allowed to do things that are inconsistent with policy. There's consequences for that. I think it's within our purview to make recommendations to administrative procedures in general. But I know where the genesis of this came from. And it came from board members wanting to review all of the procedures for everything in the entire district and having a say on it.
Procedures.
There are. I'm sure every, every department has procedures on how they do things.
And I believe this is a required policy.
All right, so let's not get rid of BGD.
Okay. And then I was looking at like the sample, we had sample policies from the NHSBA.
Yes.
And then we had our own policies. So our, like, I'm not sure where you want to go in, but I have like.
Yep, I'm just pulling up my print packet, which I pulled out an hour ago, but I didn't.
Oh, so like, so BDE, the one that's on Committees and Delegates? And I said, I like our policy better than the sample NHSBA policy. And it was not addressed in BGAA.
Okay, I'm sorry, which one is that?
BDE.
E.
That's the next one. All right, so do we want to? Do we want to, so let's, let's take each of these individually then. Well, I was hoping that if there were stuff that we missed, we could like shove it into BGAA. But I'm thinking maybe now that we don't want to do that. Where can I put BG? Want to have in front of my face more than one thing at the same time. I want to have so that I'm looking at BGAA in one hand and the other ones in the other. And I think I have them all printed out. I just don't have them in any good order. Thank you. So that I can cross-reference because I didn't write notes on it because that would have been smart. All right, so BDE is not part of BGAA. What about the other ones? BDF, part, BDF is not part of BGAA either. So, okay. I'm going to respect you. So let's, let's go ahead and make the motion on BGAA and then review the other ones individually.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So I move that we adopt BGAA with the changes that we discussed, which is page one, C, strike, "Consistent with BGAC." Page two, D six, the blank should say, "Monthly." Page three, no, page two, section E three should say, "BDH," in the blank. Section E four should say, "Policy." Section A six, E six should say, "Coded consistent with NHSBA system." Page four, E one should say, "Three days prior to the meeting." And page four, G four should strike, "If applicable, in each school building."
Second.
And so Ms. Cincella talked to me this afternoon and said that the recording hasn't been working the last couple of meetings.
Okay.
So I made sure that I, like, double-checked I pressed the button tonight. But now I'm nervous that all she's going to have is my little chicken scratch and Mr. Poska's chicken scratch to reference.
Still have to you guys, have to have you guys come in and translate for her.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Because I've got arrows and like lines, it's not, it's not clear. Okay, so let's look at BDE. So BDE is Committees and Delegates. It's interesting how the sample policy has different committees than we have decided to have. I like our committees better as well.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily think we need a transportation committee, but I do think negotiations is an interesting one to have as a committee. And I know that we talked about having HR be the negotiations committee. And we sent that over to HR to talk amongst themselves and decide if that's something they want to do.
Yeah.
Currently, our situation with negotiations is that the president talks to all the members and then assigns people to the various union contract negotiations teams kind of on a voluntold basis.
Yeah, like the ad hoc committees, right?
Yeah, kind of. So, so we have seven different unions that we have to do contracts with. And so we try to stagger the contracts so that they don't all come up the same year. But there are some years where we have three or even four contracts in one year. And it, it seems overly burnin' some to have only three or four people out of nine be the ones to do all that negotiation. So obviously, people who work full-time wouldn't be able to do it anyway. So then it cuts into it. So I like ours better as well for that. And I kind of like how ours says what the, what the five standing committees should do.
Yeah.
Do we need to add to ours a wellness committee? In accordance to the wellness policy? Or is it a board member to, as opposed to a standing committee of the board, a board member would be assigned?
Correct, hence the latter.
Okay.
I don't think we have to designate that.
Okay, good. All right, any other concerns or questions about BDE? It does, we did add in 2018 a time length
Yeah.
for the committees. It's not something that I have any strong feelings about. But at the time in 2018, the board felt very strongly about wanting to make sure that our committee and regular meetings had some expectation of a time commitment.
Yeah, that makes sense.
For both us and the public so that it's not going to be a four-hour policy meeting.
Yeah, I like, I like keeping it like that. And it says that you can make it longer if you want, and that makes sense to me. I, I don't know, is there anything from the, the sample policy that you want to add to our policy? I mean, it's really just a list of the, of the committees that don't even really match up with ours.
No.
Okay.
It isn't, and I, I kind of, the part of it, at the end of the sample policy, it says that they'll be appointed by the chairperson of the board. We say it's approved by the president, but we also require it to be approved by a majority of the board. And I'm sure you've experienced, there are times when board members don't agree with what the president wants to do and then we have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
Which I think is, is fair and appropriate as we come together as colleagues to figure out what works for everyone's schedule and interests. And then the other part that we have that, that is, School Board Association doesn't recommend, but I kind of like, is that we limit chairmanships to one. So we don't end up with, you know, three or four board members who are chairing all of the committees.
I like it better this way, too. I mean, it seems more fair, more representative.
Yep, I think so, too. We want to be equitable. But we also want to be respectful of people's time because a lot of our board members work full-time. And you have, you're trying to balance giving back to the community with all the other things you've got going on. Hey. Did you have any thoughts or questions, Mr. Poska?
I mean, I think to the, I think as this discussion has proved, you know, the, the keeping BDE as is, I think makes some sense based upon what it, it does in detail some things that are not covered in the BGAA that we just recommended to adopt.
Is this one that we had to change the formatting? I don't even know. All right, so I move that we send it to the board as is. Can I borrow your two second?
Oh, yes, second, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's BDE. The next one I have on the agenda tonight is BDEA, which is the Policy Committee. And I think my question is, do we really need to have a, a a policy, entitled policy committee when we have just suggested? when we have just suggested this longer, more global one called BGAA, which talks about not just us sitting here, but what the whole responsibility is for managing policies?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. The only thing that I noted is that, the only thing that's not covered is how often we should review all the policies, which just says every four years, but that doesn't even get done, right? So it just seems like it's totally not necessary at all, really.
Right, it doesn't. I think that that was an aspirational thing. I've not known, I mean, we have policies, when I became policy chair, the first time back in 20, I forget, 18? 2017, 2017? We had policies from the 80s.
Oh, my, yeah, that's crazy.
You know, and I think we still have a couple of policies floating out there. It's important, I think that we're doing better with trying to go through the old ones and look at them, and sometimes not so old ones, and sometimes they're fine. But I don't know that we need to.
I don't think it needs to be in there. I, I think that BGAA is good.
Hi, great. And I, frankly, I think that number one on this policy is insufficient, given that BGAA says four pages of how to do that.
Also.
Right, like, and frankly, I think it's helpful because in the past, when we weren't part of the School Boards Association, there was a lot of like Googling by the policy chair and administration to see what other districts were doing. And because we didn't have a professional association that did that work for us.
Yeah, there's a reason why the professional associations are there. It's best practices.
And, and they've had their lawyer look at the policies, which is.
Yeah.
You know, there was a lot of me running downtown to talk to corporation counsel. And have somebody for, like, one of the attorneys for the city review of policies.
When did you guys vote to, to join the NHSBA?
2019?
I think it's relatively new.
Was it contentious, or does it, was it just?
It was.
Really? Oh, I think it was a great idea. I'm glad you guys did it.
It was. We, we had voted, so my first two years on the board, we were not part of the association. It came up and was defeated both years. And then I think the third year, finally voted to agree. And part of it is budget. It's difficult to justify spending, I think it's $10,000 a year in association dues when your budgets are tight. And there may come a point in the future where the school budgets become tight and we have to look at things to cut.
Yeah.
And I think that the school board has, has prioritized spending on things that directly benefit students over things that benefit the board.
Yeah.
Which is why we had the ancient recording system, right? And this, this room still can't do Zooms, right? Because we were really hesitant to spend, you know, I don't, I don't remember how much that was supposed to cost, $30,000 or $40,000?
But I mean, if it, if it makes our schools run better, then, you know, I think policy is important enough that you need to have this, that it's worth spending that money on because it's like the foundation that all the, the administration rests on.
Yeah, I agree. I, I was a proponent of joining this association because I think policies are frequently are reflective of laws, and we don't want to get into a situation where we are out of compliance legally that could be costly for the district.
Yeah.
So, all right, so I move that we rescind BDEA because now we have BGAA.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay. Okay. BDF, Advisory Committees to the Board. So BDF, we talk about in here ad hoc committees. The sample policy from the school board is very, very, very similar. Only they call them advisory committees consistently throughout.
Yeah, I, I didn't see any differences. I, the only thing I did see was that it's not addressed in BGAA at all. So we need to have one of them. I don't, doesn't seem, I don't think it matters which one.
I kind of, ours, it's so very similar. There aren't really any major language differences. So I think that we should keep it as well.
Okay.
And I, I think it's important because here we're talking about, we can do citizens, we can assign citizens to advisory committees as well. And we've done that in the past. Like when we worked on a strategic plan in the past, we had citizen volunteers that we were able to assign to that process. When we were doing superintendent search, we've assigned people, we did it just with redistricting. And we probably want to do it again as we're looking at redistricting in a, a different way.
Okay.
So I don't want to lose that.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of keeping it.
All right, so we're going to move to send BDF to the board without changes. I'm making the motion.
Second, oh, second.
Seconding it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the last one, I really wish that Ms. Johnson was here because I really thought that she would have some thoughts on this, and I wanted to hear them, is BGD, which is the right to review and make recommendations on administrative procedures. And there is not, there's just not a policy that is similar to that in the School Board Association catalog.
Do you want to hold on to that one and see if we can get more full policy board? So we can have a discussion?
I think it just doesn't exist.
Oh, I mean, not like, not to, not to change it to the NHSBA, but whether we want to keep it or not.
We can do that. I don't mind tabling this one until next time and seeing if there's more people here.
Okay.
And I think I would be interested in hearing if administration has any thoughts or concerns about keeping the policy or, you know, because I want us to be, we're here to provide community oversight to the running of the district, which is appropriate. And we're also here to provide support, which is appropriate. But we're not here to manage the district. We hire people to do that. So I want to make sure that the board stays in our lane and lets the educators educate and make protocols and processes, and that we're not trying to do that. Because we tried to do that in the past, and it never goes well.
I, I, I think, yeah, I think it's better to wait. I mean, because Ms. Johnson, she has a, you know, she has a different way of looking at stuff than me and you do. So I think it's good to have, instead of us making a decision and going to the board and saying, well, this is what we think, and having a big scrum there. I think it's better to just wait and see, get more information and have more people's thoughts.
I agree completely. I think diversity of thought on the board is helpful, and it makes the process better.
Yeah.
So, oh, good, I'm glad we're aligned on that. So I'm just going to leave it in our queue. I wrote table for feedback.
Okay, do we need to take a motion for that, or?
Let's table it until we get more feedback. I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so there's one other matter I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. I forgot, so this is my fault, to ask Tara to include something in tonight's pocket, packet, which was probably good because our packet was really long. So this evening, I sent out an email, I don't know what time, like quarter of six. It was right before I left for here. I was like, oh, my gosh, it's not in the packet, because I never gave it to Tara. I sent out a link to the members of the Policy Committee. I also sent it to Ms. Johnson, because she likes to come to this committee, and Mr. Poska, and Dr. Andreid. And the link is to the New Hampshire Department of Education's Legislative Summary. So if anybody is looking for it out in the public, it's really easy to find. If you go to the Department of Education's website, they have technical advisories. And then they also have the Department of Education Legislative Update. And so this is, I, I went to print it, and it was like 35 pages of a list of all of the bills that were both passed and retained in the House and Senate committees this year. And on the Legislative Update, they have hyperlinks so that you can click on it and actually see the final version that was signed. So Governor Sununu signed 11 bills over the summer. And the New Hampshire School Board Association is having a webinar. It was supposed to be today, but it was delayed till October the 10th. So the other thing I included in the email was a link to register for the webinar, because we're our School Board Association members, we can go for free. So I've registered so that I can learn about what was signed into law, what the policy changes will be required. And then I can compare that to our policies and bring it to a future meeting.
Okay.
Probably in November. But I wanted to extend the invitation to everybody on the Policy Committee and actually, everybody on the board. If you are available to take the webinar, it should be very interesting. I will bring the materials back.
Okay.
So that we can all have it. But it's also interesting to see the number of bills that were retained. It's a lot. So if people have thoughts on those, all of the retained bills are currently in, they stay in the, in the Education Committee. Typically, it's Education Committee. And what the, the chair of that committee usually does is assign a small subset of the committee to meet and kind of hash out what the disagreements were.
Okay.
And see if they can come up with an amendment. And so that when in January, the House meets again and the Senate meets again, those committee members can then make a recommendation to the committee. So all of the other, the retained bills, other than the 11, are things that might come up at the next House and Session Center, House and Senate session starting in January.
Okay.
And since I am a member of the House, if anybody on the board or within the school district has feelings about any of these retained bills, as a representative for Nashua, I'm happy to meet with people. I'm happy to hear their thoughts. And I'm happy to take the time to go up and testify and share those thoughts with the committee, provided it isn't on a day that I'm in child and family law, because.
Okay.
So I need to go to my own committee. But it's long, it's a lot. But I will bring the webinar information regarding the 11 bills that were signed back to this committee.
With the webinars, you can like register and then listen to it at a later time, right?
I think once you've registered, afterwards, they send you a link to like the, the videotape.
Tape it, yes.
And then if there's like a PowerPoint, they'll send you the link to the PowerPoint.
Okay.
So it's worth registering. It was supposed to be this afternoon, but the instructor for the webinar had jury duty. So it got canceled on Friday. And so I was really disappointed because I was hoping to have something to bring, but I'm not. But just to, it, it's interesting. I think a lot of these are not really going to impact Nashua a lot.
That's good to hear.
So like, there's a bill regarding criminal history checks for people on buses. We already do that in Nashua. So, and I remember talking to a previous superintendent about how important that was to him and how it can be very time-consuming, that we make sure that everybody's fingerprinted and background-checked if they're going to be in our buildings or around our kids. There's another one regarding coordinating with law enforcement. We already do that. There's some, though, with school placement and dispute resolution with special education that I don't have a good grasp on yet. So I want to go to the webinars so that I can learn about it and then explain it to you.
I'll make sure I get to, I'll make sure I'll do it, too, because it'll be useful for policy going forward, I think.
Yep, and at our last main board meeting, Ms. Darling, who couldn't be here tonight, brought up her concerns about seclusion and restraint. And so one of the bills that was passed is specifically regarding seclusion and restraint. And I know that Mr. Alexander, Mr. Poska, and I looked at our policy, but this will allow me to double-check as well.
Okay.
With the School Board Association.
Actually, I met with, I met with Mr. Alexander and Dr. Andreid about the restraining, restraining seclusion was one of the things we discussed earlier this month, so. I, we had a good conversation about it.
I, I spoke with, a constituent had reached out to me after, apparently, there was an article in The Telegraph. They don't get The Telegraph anymore. So I didn't see it, and, and they didn't contact me for a comment, so, like, I don't know. But I know that Broad Street has a high number of interventions with students, but it's also home to one of our most intensive needs programs. So those are the students that need the most help and guidance to be able to, you know, make it through the school day. And so I, I think that the principal.
One of the things that we talked about was that they used to have all of the Project Achieve, I think it's called.
Yep.
They used to have all of them at Broad Street, but now they have like half of them at one of the other schools, Bicentennial, I think. They're split, so there's not, they're not all in one location anymore.
Right, yeah, I know Birch Hill had.
Only Birch Hill.
Birch Hill had some students as well from Project Achievement.
Yeah.
So, and at one point, Main Dunstable did, but they were moved out because of the construction. I think Main Dunstable had an autism program. So at, at any rate, it's interesting, and I will let you guys know. And the only other one I wanted to just kind of mention is there were some changes for civics education.
There were.
And cursive, was it cursive as well? We have to teach cursive. And so if we have to make changes, that won't be a policy, that will be a curriculum.
I want to sign their name.
Listen, seems really unnecessary. As someone who hated cursive when I was in elementary school and haven't used it since. I can make the argument for the gross and fine motor skills. But I don't personally agree with the arguments about reading Declaration of Independence and doing some other things because it's just not relevant anymore. I mean, because all of that stuff is available in print.
Yeah.
Right, like, my son had to memorize the Declaration of Independence this year for AP US Gov., and they didn't hand him a giant parchment. Right, the AP textbook has it in print.
Yeah. I don't, memorizing doesn't seem all that helpful. But, you know, that's another subject entirely.
Well, that's, it's the AP Gov. class. You have to memorize, memorize Declaration of Independence. You have to have a close familiarity with the Articles of Confederation, with the Constitution and all of the amendments to the Constitution. Like, you have to have this broad, specific knowledge base in order to move on to the more interesting discussions, right? So, yeah, they didn't have that class when I was in high school. AP History was enough for me. So that's all I have. I'm kind of getting far afield at this point. Did you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, so I think the only other thing is, Mr. Castellano was not here this evening. But Dante has asked to meet with Mr. Poska and I and the principals to talk about competency-based grading. So we will be meeting with some student representatives and the principals to talk about what's going on with competency-based grading and hear what the kids have to say. And then if we need to, we'll bring that to a future meeting.
That sounds really interesting. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Cool.
No, I think we sent that information out to the, to the, to the student reps and to the principals last week. So looking to find some time in the next couple of weeks to, to meet and discuss that further.
Yeah, I'm interested, I'm, I'm actually really enjoying how active the student reps have been the last couple of years. We had student reps who really initiated the GPA change. This was a student-led initiative. And now we have students wanting to talk about, you know, the wellness policy. And we have students wanting to talk about competency-based grading. And I, I think that having the voice of the students is really helpful. I don't know where we're going to go with it because we haven't had the conversation yet, but I'm interested.
Yeah.
So, right, that's all I have. So if you're ready to adjourn.
Yes, I second.
All right, now you moved, I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
All in favor of adjoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned at 7:14 PM.